I still want to see the table.
Thank you, sir.
Have your attention, please. And welcome to the Lowell Planting Board for Thursday, January 23rd, 2025. And the first member, I mean, the first matter on the agenda this evening, I would like to introduce our new member, Lucia Walker, who's over here. This is a new member who's been appointed. So congratulations for her appointment. And our other board member, Caleb Chang, is not here this evening because he just had a baby boy Timothy on Monday. So we wish him well. And we told him to stay home and take care of his young boy and not bring him out in the cold to watch his meeting. So moving along, we'll have an approval for the January 6 minutes of 2025. Any of the board members have any corrections or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, motion's made. Do we have a second? Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. So those minutes are approved. Okay, so moving along on the agenda tonight is 357 Pawtucket Street is a site plan and special permit. Franco American Holding LLC applied to Lowell Planting Board to construct an 80-unit mixed-use building at the above address. The subject property is located in a traditional mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per Article 12.1 and Section 11.3 for greater than 11 residential units on the lot and site plan review approval for Section 11.4 for development with greater than three residential units.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin hearing testimony, I will be recusing myself on this petition.
Okay. So Mr. Vichet will not be voting. Obviously Caleb's here, he won't be voting, and Lucia won't be voting because this is her first meeting and she wasn't at the last meeting. So it'll be myself, Mr. Tenzar, Mr. Cadoza Silva, and Mr. Sa voting on the project. So this project was before, was at our last meeting back on January 6th. We heard the presentation from council and the applicant, and we had, we opened up to the public. I believe in favor, we had Dave Ledhu spoke from the Neighborhood Association, and nobody spoke against. The board indicated that they want to see a little more updated comment from the city departments. And as a result of that, the meeting was continued to tonight's meeting. And saying that, I'll turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here with, for Franco American Holdings LLC for 357 Pawtucket Street and the proposal we have before you, seeking site plan review and also a special permit. During the interim period, some comments were made, some interactions with the different city divisions to try to get to some agreement on a couple of the issues, but some of them were just to be solidified that they were already dealt with previous and put in writing. Dave Jordan's here with us, our engineer, and he'll address most of the questions from, or comments from the city, if there are any from the members. And Mr. Chairman, yourself.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Jordan, civil engineer and land surveyor with Greenland Peterson. So I can quickly run through the few minor changes we've made. The other thing we have this evening, which we did not have with us last time, are the slides of the, of the project. So what you're looking at currently, or hopefully you're looking at currently, is the front facade of the building, looking at it from Pawtucket Street. So again, since we were here last time, we've made a few minor revisions to the plan. We've had additional communication with the city. And I think we're at the point where we've addressed all of the comments that were provided to us. I believe we may be waiting just for confirmation from one or two city departments, but in general, we've, we've addressed everything. So one of the first things I just want to mention is that at the last meeting, there was a request by, or a question by a board member about bicycle parking. And let me speak to that right here. So I know it's a little difficult to see, but this is the upper garage level. So this is Fanning Street here, Pawtucket Street over here. We provided bike parking, bike storage in two locations. One is outside the building, and we show that on the site plan. We have bike racks adjacent to that commercial space that's at the corner of Fanning and Pawtucket Street. So that'd be available, those spots would be available for public use. For the residents, we're providing bike storage in three locations in the upper-level garage. We have a bike storage area identified here, another one here, and a third one here. And again, that would be for the residents living within the building. So again, we, that was something that we'd always intended to provide. We just hadn't shown that on the plans that we had presented to you three weeks ago. I'm going to kind of zip through some other slides here. And I just want to get to a couple of the other views, which again, we weren't able to show you last time. So this is again, this is Pawtucket Street here. This is the existing historic mansion. So that's a photo of the existing building with a rendering of the proposed building superimposed. So you can see how the two relate to each other in this slide here. And then going down just one more. So this is the view, again Pawtucket Street, but this is Fanning on this side and Pawtucket Street. So this is that retail space that's anchored on the corner. The bike parking I just talked about would be, bike racks would be over here, kind of behind this car. And then the entrance into the site that goes through the building occurs right here. See, see here, right now the rendering is envisioning some kind of maybe cafe space with this, with this commercial space here, with maybe some outdoor ceilings. And it also shows a rendering of the landscaping that is planned, which is another comment that was brought at the last meeting, was that the plans, that the landscape plan we had submitted didn't exactly mimic what was shown on these renderings. So since then, we have met with DPD staff. We've gone over their comments with respect to the landscape plan and made some revisions. I can kind of jump up through here. Just bear with me for a minute. So again, a little difficult to see, but we've actually supplemented the landscape plan we originally provided by adding the trees that are shown on the rendering here. DPD staff actually said that as opposed to the hedgerow along Pawtucket Street, along the upper garage level, they wanted a mix of shrubs and native pollinator-friendly species, which we've done. We've provided some additional information and detail on the landscaping on Fanning Street, and I think a little bit more robust plantings, a little bit interior to the site. It's our understanding that after we submitted this, DPD staff has said that they are in agreement with this plan. We've sat aside their comments. We had another, a number of comments from engineering, really just technical in nature. I can go over those if the board wishes, but I'll say at the moment that, you know, we have addressed those. I don't think we've received final sign-off. But again, those are all minor in nature. We received some stormwater comments. We acknowledge that we will need an EPA Construction General Permit and a permit under your local stormwater program. That'll all happen prior to construction. And with wastewater, they wanted some clarity on the sewer connection, which we provided. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd just turn it over to you and the board and be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I open up to the public? Nope, you all set? Okay. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? Favor? None at this time? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members. I'll, I'll start, I'll start with Mr. Tenza, then I'll do my comments, then I'll turn it over to the other board members over here. Dan, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the applicant. Really appreciate the fact that you guys addressed a lot of the things that, a lot of the questions that we had about the bicycle racks, about the landscaping. That, that's, that's awesome. I did have some questions and, but they're more curiosity. Streetkeepers, street, street sweepers, you have it listed as some sort of tree, a streetkeeper or something, something like that. You have ivory silk trees. I'm just curious what they are.
I'm probably curious as well, because I am, I'm not a landscape architect. I defer to our landscape architecture.
It's no big deal. I, I was just curious.
And, and honestly, again, those were selected because we were kind of pointed in that direction by DPD staff, meaning get stuff, get stuff, get trees and shrubs that are native to the area, pollinator-friendly, create some biodiversity with the landscape design, which is what we did.
Yeah. No, I appreciate what you guys did, and I appreciate the, the input by DPD. I think it makes the project better. We did receive some feedback from some of the departments. Fire Department signed off, as you mentioned. Transportation signed off on the, on the, the traffic impact plan, landscaping obviously through DPD. There were a couple of departments, we're probably going to have to put it, make it conditional that, you know, obviously there'd be approval from those departments. But I, I love the project, and I love the fact that it has parking in Lowell. So great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, my comments are big. Going over what we had last time, that you did get approval from the landscaping plan from DPD. So we're very satisfied with that. Last time, you did indicate that you did give the TIP generation report to us. And I know the city transportation engineer has read up, read that report and talked about the, the road safety audit that was completed back in 2021 between Pawtucket Street and School Street. And she said she'd be very happy to work with you to make any improvements that, that were necessary. Again, with the fire department, last time, they said they required, let me say, the fire department required the architect to provide a sweep path analysis. The fire department has said they saw the report, they, final, what'd they say? They'll need a final sign-off once they have a chance to take a better close look at it. I think I wrote down a couple of the notes that they actually gave us. Yeah, I think I got it right here. Yeah, okay. Yeah, for, yeah. For the fire department, the specs used for the apparatus and the sweep path are not our exact lattice three specs, but they appear close enough. I will approve these plans with the understanding that we will be physically taking lattice three through this path to ensure compliance before final sign-off of the project. So basically, I'm sure you, you'd be fine if we, if we approve it with the condition, you get your final sign-off from the fire department, which is obviously safety, health, welfare, it comes under all our site plan reviews. It sounds like initially, they're on board with everything. They just want to finalize it. And obviously, it'd be good to have them take a look at that before you construct anything too tough. So don't, don't have to start ripping things down. Yeah. And then I can say for that, the trip report that we got from Ms. Altman was, the trip generation analyst was performed in accordance with the industry standards. The transportation demand management plan was totally acceptable. I will work with the applicant's engineer and the city electrician for any low-cost multi-model improvements that can be made at the intersection of Pawtucket and School Street that would aid the city in the proposed development. So obviously, those are two big comments that we really wanted to see last time. And to me, the fire department is always a very important one. And obviously, the trip report is important as well. So obviously, they indicated that you need a stormwater permit. So basically, a lot of times, we make that the condition, but even if, if we don't, and you don't get it, then you can't open it, you don't get the occupancy permit. So that's kind of a catch-22. But besides that, I thought you did a very good job. I think it's an excellent project. I think the project that you started with to begin with was an excellent project. When, when you're in the making of working on that, and one of the questions was the height requirement, I remember going to the site, and then people working on site, and one of the gentlemen asked who I was, and he, he says, does Mr. McGuire know who you are? I said, yeah, I think he knows who I am. So he called him up and said, Mr. Linehan wants to go on the roof and take a look, Ken Eagle, show him whatever you want. And I tell you, once I went up there and looked all the way up the Merrimack River, it was in the fall, I believe, what a beautiful sight that is.
Phenomenal.
Yeah. And the main thing was, at the time, I think we had to give relief because of the height. And you look across the street, it was actually lower than was, was across the street. Because as you know, it slopes down. So I mean, I know he does great work and looking at this and what you've done in the back of the old project there, it was, it's just beautiful. And I commend all the work you've done up there. It's going to be real, really nice. I really appreciate everything you've done.
Great. Thank you.
So obviously, I'm in favor of the project. So, so at this time, I'll turn it over. Mr. Sa, do you have any comments? We'll start with you, then we'll go to Giovanni.
I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I like your project.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it does look like a, Giovanni, look. Okay. So basically, what we need here tonight, we need a site plan and a special permit. So I'll make a motion on the site plan to approve the site plan. Like I say, DPD is satisfied with the landscaping, so we don't need any conditional approval on that. I would just say for, to get the final sign-off from the fire department. Get this stormwater permit. Basically, to work with the transportation engineer, if any road safety audits that didn't complete. What was the other thing I had? Fire department permit.
Chairman, what was that last one, the, the transportation engineer?
To, to work with the transportation engineer? Because, you know, they mentioned about how they had a road safety audit that was completed back in '21, and how she said she'd be willing to work with them on that. So I would say to work with any, with the traffic, transportation engineer to help comply with any of the road safety audit. We got the fire. And the other one I put down is, basically, I know most of them, as you indicated, from the engineering, boilerpoint ones, I think, I mean, I know, like, but I would, do you have any objections to any of those at all for engineering? I mean, I know some, and talk about the new concrete sidewalks. I mean, a lot of them, and talks about, you know, you have to let us know final plan, which I don't think is a problem, but through the engineering, no problem with engineering?
Yeah, no, no problem with them.
Okay. And the fourth one I put down is to, let's see. To include all the engineer comments in the final plans. And, oh, any other, let me rephrase that. So cooperate with the engineering department and as indicated with their comments as indicated on the memo dated January 6th, 2025. Do I think those cover my comments? Anything else, Dan?
Wastewater?
Yeah.
Did you have wastewater on there?
Okay, yeah. Yes, we had final approval from wastewater.
Final approval from wastewater and, well, stormwater.
Yeah, I think I included stormwater. Negative fire, stormwater, transportation, engineering, and wastewater. Okay?
Yep.
All right, so that's my motion for the site plan. Do we have?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries for in favor, none against. Now we need a motion for the special permit. I will make the same motion to approve incorporating the same conditions as approved by the site plan.
Seconded.
Motion's made in second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries as well, for in favor and none against. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We like the presentation. Look, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
You do good work up there. Appreciate it very much. Yeah, I know I had that. Yeah, oh, yeah. Let's wake them up. right. Gotcha. Thank you, T. Yep.
On what's coming up in the zoning, did anything over 50, they have to put some sort of deed restriction, anything over 50 units, before they get a building permit? I never heard of it, but it kind of makes sense. Basically says, don't turn it into a tax-exempt entity.
Okay.
Because they want, because they want the funds.
Yep, yeah.
I thought it was interesting. I was going to ask about it, but I'm like.
I'll explain to you later. Yeah. Yeah, I got you. I know what you're talking about. Yep.
You know the origins of that?
Yes, I do. I don't want to talk about it right now. Yeah, we can, okay. All right, moving along on the agenda. The next matter is 684 Westford Street. This is a site plan, special permit, and a definitive subdivision. 684 Westford Street LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to construct a four-single-family homes and a one-two-family home at the above address. The subject property is located in traditional two-family zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review, approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for development with greater than three residential units, and special permit approving from the planning board per Section 5.1.17 and Section 11.3 to reduce the frontage. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Linehan, members of the planning board. Welcome to the new members. Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Representative Dave Daley, who is the manager of the Westford Street LLC. Some of the members may recall, we were here a couple of months ago and requesting that the city extend the zone, which the planning board extended, as did the city council unanimously. We were here in, in December. This is the site of the former American Legion, post '89. I certainly remember it from the old days, and some of you may as well. But it is a 45,000-square-foot It's a 45,000-square-foot lot with a, with basically a barroom there and a parking lot. That, that's basically it. Just a little bit of history on this. Mr. Daley has owned this property since 2022, and he was hoping he could have it developed commercially. Did not pan out, or has not panned out as of yet. Started looking at it as potential development for resident, for residential use. And back in September, actually September the 12th, we met, we had a neighborhood meeting. About 80 neighbors showed up and voiced their concerns and what have you, support and concerns. Mr. Daley took those concerns to heart. We came back, we had another meeting on September the 26th, at which time, a, this, this, basically, this plan was proposed. And felt that it was, and there was about 40 people, 35 to 40 people at that, at that meeting. And it felt like this was a better proposal. The neighborhood seemed to like this better. And so this is obviously the proposal that we're going with this evening. I want to point out that we were, again, we were in December before the planning board, I think one person may have spoken in opposition. Before the city council, I don't believe anybody spoke in opposition. We were before the Historic Commission last night, because this isn't a Tyler Park Historic District. The Historic Commission voted to give, to grant us demolition permit as well as construction permit for this plan. They asked for a couple of changes, which we have made, and actually, we were in front of them last week, and they asked for a couple of changes pertaining to, I can't say the word, coppolas, coppolas?
Cupola.
Cupolas, whatever. And, and to take those out and put the phony, not phony, fake fireplaces in, we've done that, chimneys, I mean. They also asked us to wrap the, the front porch around Lot, Lot Two, which is the corner of Florence and Westford, to make that look better. We added some windows, and, and we, we also wrapped that, that porch around. So they issued the, the historic permit last night. We, we have, I know we have some people there to speak tonight, but some of the, the real benefits of this proposal, it is, it's an undeveloped lot, has been for a long time, clearly. And if you go by there, you know, you know what I mean. We could, you know, hopefully, we'll put four new homes in there, single-family homes in one duplex. It's going to add considerable revenue to the city, which they're not getting now. It's going to increase the housing stock in the city in, in furtherance of the Lowell formal housing plan. The, there will be no curb cuts on Westford Street. As you'll see in the back, there's a, a common drive in the back off of Florence. And it's going to restore a bladed property, a bladed property in that beautiful neighborhood. DPD has, has issued a memo, very strong memo, dated January the 15th. And if I might just point out, there are some, there are conditions, clearly, which, which we have no problem with. Clearly, we would go along with them. But on number eight on their, their memo, the proposal exceeds parking requirement with greater than two off-street parking spaces per unit provided. The design of the property is subject to Historic Board approval, which, which, which we have received. And then, you know, the plan shows each property via one driveway. The proposed condition, number 10, we agree with. We have submitted a landscaping plan. I think it was submitted today, as a matter of fact, a number 11. Number 12, actually, the, we'll obtain approval from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. We have, we agree to that. The applicant said provide a utility agreement for each of the properties subject to wastewater approval. We, we agree to that. We actually will put together a homeowners' association to kind of oversee the, the common drive and, and, you know, garbage and things like that. So that will keep it with, with, you know, within the, within the actual development. Number 17, the provided lot sizes and frontages are comparable to many of the surrounding properties. Eighteen, the proposed use, uses are more in line with TTF zone and surrounding zoning districts than the pre-existing non-conforming club lodge use. And number 19, the proposed development is a significant improvement over existing conditions on the lot and will provide the city with, with needed housing. So, and as far as the comments go, I know you have them all in front of you, but the fire department has no problems with it. Historic Board, again, we've got fire department has no problems with it, historic board, again, we got their permission, their approval last night. The stormwater comments, we absolutely agree with. Transportation comments, I think are very good. The combined driveway onto Florence Avenue is preferable to several new single-family driveways onto Westford Street. Wastewater, we have no, we agreed to, and the water department, we will keep them up to date. And as far as the transportation comments, Florence Ave and Westford Street, just last night as a matter of fact, in furtherance of Mr. Daley listening to the neighbors and trying to, not trying to, but actually succeeding in granting whatever we could possibly grant, one of the neighbors who was here this evening talked about Westford Street, parking on Westford Street, had a concern, because it's a busy street, and said there's a lot of, could be a lot of accidents there, concerned about limiting or excluding parking on Westford Street in front of these homes. We have absolutely no objection to that. I don't believe we, or even the planning board, can restrict that. I think that's up to the city council, but that's something we would obviously support, you know, as a, if you can make it a condition, we have no issue with that, but I think that's, you know, that just shows Mr. Daley trying to continue to listen to the neighbors and take their concerns into context. Dave Fieldson is with, he's Matt's right-hand man with Lantec, and he'll have any engineering questions you may have, but we have, there's also a memo from Joe Cady, the engineer, dated January 15th, which has a number of conditions, and we agree to all of them. We have no issue with any of them, and we'd be happy to make all of those conditions part of any approval. So it's, I think it's a very exciting proposal for the city. You're taking, again, a piece of property that is not being used well and can turn it into beautiful housing. And anybody who knows Dave Daley and the work that he's done in Lowell and the surrounding communities knows the type of work that he does. And that was noted last night at the historic commission. They're clearly familiar with his work, and they know that he does a first-class job always. So, you know, with that, we have, again, Dave answering questions, I'll answer questions I can answer, but we are totally in agreement with the city's conditions and have zero problem with any of them. So thanks very much, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Can we see some of the renderings, if you don't mind? Thank you. The duplex, okay?
If you grab a microphone.
Okay, yeah, actually, if you want to grab one of those microphones right behind you, all you have to do is make sure you push the button so the green light shows up. There's usually one.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's usually someone in council.
Thank you.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah, David Fieldson with Lamplex, I work with Matt Hammer, and these, and yes, these are the architectural renderings. This is the duplex.
Yes, a building in the area, okay.
That's going to be the Lot 1, the two-family.
Okay.
And then this is the rendering.
You can put that one on top. That way it'll be a bit better.
This is the architectural rendering for lots 3 through 5, which are the single-families, not on the corner, the ones that are just fronting Westford Street.
Okay.
And then, and this is the rendering for the Lot 2 on the corner with the wraparound porch.
Okay, yeah. What's the other plan you have?
This is the, this is the updated site plan, and yeah, we have a landscaping plan.
He does, and I know we have a copy of it as well, yeah.
Showing street trees along Westford Street in Florence, and some interior trees and shrubs.
Right.
Yes.
The project is facing to Westford, right?
That's correct. And they'll have steps down, and I believe that they're retaining the existing stone steps here for Lot 5, which was a condition of the historic board last night.
Anything further for the applicant, council?
Sorry?
Anything further on behalf of the applicant?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project?
Hi, Ellen Moriarty Bowser. I live at 167 Westview Road in the Highlands. I did come to your last meeting, and I've gone to every meeting that David has had for this development held at the Legion with the neighbors. I am a Highlands girl, born and bred, neighborhood's pretty important to me. It is an old-fashioned neighborhood. We still walk our dogs, we still all know each other, it's a nice community. Tyler Park is right there in that development. They do summer concerts and outside activities. It's very family-oriented. I'm very much so looking forward to this piece of land being developed by the professional that Mr. Daley is, adding some new homes and some new residents, a tax revenue to help my property values go up. No cuts into Westford Street is extremely important for traffic-wise, children walking on that street. It's just a really nice neighborhood, and again, I just wanted to thank you for your time and to please consider this as a great opportunity for the Highlands.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Morgan Shermerhorn. I'm a direct butter to the property.
You're in the area, right?
Yes, directly behind the duplex.
I remember you spoke at the zoning hearing, yep.
Yes, yeah, thanks. I am in favor of this project. It took us a few iterations to get to where we are tonight, and I'm super grateful to Mr. Daley for meeting with the neighborhood and actually working with us, not something he has to do, so really kind of him. I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old who live in my home with me, obviously, and walk Tyler Park all the time, walking my dog all the time also in the park all summer, and really looking forward to hopefully welcoming some new families to the neighborhood. Housing is obviously a huge issue right now in Lowell, so it would be really nice to see these beautiful homes be added. Parking, I think if we can take a look at Westford Street, the corner of Westford and Florence, right on Florence, I think that's really important just to try and limit the street parking on Florence, because it is pretty difficult to get out of Florence as is, so that would be really helpful. I'm not sure if that's this committee or someone else, but I thought I would raise that. And other than that, yeah, I just, I love the project and hope to see it happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Hunt. I'm the president of the Friends of Tyler Park, and I'm here to speak in favor of this evening. Mr. Daley does a great job throughout the city with construction projects, and I know he'll do a great job with this. The caveat that I do have is what we just talked about, the parking on Westford Street, that I know you don't really have a lot that you can do with this, but you can have an influence on it. That particular area has a bend in the road. I don't know if it's up there, I don't know if the picture of it, as you can see, if you're looking westbound from Florence, there's a curve in the road, and we never really had a problem with it when the Legion was there, except in the winter when they basically piled the snow there, and it became, you can't see to the left. And with the speed limit, that's a state road there. The speed limit right now currently is 35 miles an hour, not the 25 that goes through. So if somebody's coming 35 around that corner, you've got a split second to be able to make a decision of whether to go or whether to stay, and there have been numerous accidents there. I had Council Gitcher bring this up at the last city council meeting, and we came down and spoke on it. All the councilors were very positive about it, Mr. Daley's positive about it. I think that this is something that's simple that needs to get done, but I realize that the traffic engineer has to look at it. It's nothing that you can actually do here, but you can either make it a condition, though I don't want to really tie the whole thing to that one piece, but I do would like to see this done. That's why I'm here tonight to speak on it. And I hope that, you know, we can do something with that, because it is a very, very dangerous area there, it's treacherous. And having the house, Lot 2, is really only nine feet away from the street, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you very much, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Okay, in favor, in favor, in favor? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. This time I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Fischett.
So I did actually see on the council agenda last Friday that Council Gitcher had filed a motion to look at that stretch of Westford Street, so I kind of figured that would be part of the discussion here this evening. It is outside of the purview of the board. We certainly could make a condition that the applicant work and cooperate with the city towards that effort, but, you know, it's outside of our realm, but obviously, you know, we certainly can, it's almost equates to a non-conditioned condition, but really to make sure that the applicant works with the city, and I suspect that's not an issue, so.
Could I make a call? David Daley, 40 Lillie Street, Lowell, Mass. We talked about this at the neighborhood meeting, and their sentiments are exactly correct. That is a blind corner, that's nothing but problems coming around there. Because there is an HOA, obviously we can't adjudicate this in this form right now, but we can, we're more than happy once, because it's going to go through the process, through the city council, to put that in the HOA to restrict parking out in Westford Street as part of the HOA. Happy to put that in as a condition if it doesn't go to the, if it doesn't get through the city council, because it is really dangerous, and we don't want anyone parking there either. Like I said, I'm a longtime Lowellian, I grew up on Florence Ave, seven or eight houses up. My father helped start the Tyler Park neighborhood. This is a really important property to us. It's a legacy project for me, I drive by there every day, and I see this title, look at building, it worked for the VFW, it doesn't, American Legion, it doesn't work anymore. So we're looking forward to redeveloping it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that suggestion. That's a real condition at that point, so that's, put that into the HOA, so that's, at least it won't, the project won't contribute to anything out there, which is good. Also, that's right, in reading the proposal, it wasn't clear whether there was an HOA, so obviously that was clear this evening. And you'll be proposing a maintenance plan for the infiltration system, that, I know that's, in the Northeast, those are tricky. I know of some projects we've approved, and they've actually been deteriorated with trying to put sand and trying to avoid putting salt and sand on those, so.
As part of this development, Mr. Fischett, we will put a homeowners association together to take care of the common drive as well as any other issues that come up, as trash or anything like that.
Yeah, I believe there's a maintenance plan as to how often that will be cleaned, and that's obviously concern for those, you know, when they're first constructed, they function well, it's just, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, so that's critical. I do have a question even for the neighbor that lives in behind. I did notice, so the trash, it looks like there's a dumpster, and so how is that, because you're a little concerned, because part of the, you know, the advantages, we're going from a kind of a quasi-commercial use to residential, but then having a dumpster and having the dumpster pickup, you know, I can tell you from a residential perspective, and I know of some neighborhoods, my own neighborhood into account, there are some businesses that were right next to the residential homes, and they have dumpster pickup, and obviously, you know, early in the morning, and so I'm just curious as to, if you could explain the trash pickup within this development.
So that's a, it's a very valid point. I can tell you that that wasn't, that wasn't a, we didn't have a disposition on that trash pickup, but we figured that it did come up during neighborhood meetings, so what we wanted to do was put us, because if it did, if you guys did ask us to put in a dumpster, we had an area already allocated on site, so should you make that a condition to have private pickup, or should it be public-private, or city pickup, we wouldn't need a dumpster pad. So it's kind of discretion of the board or the neighbors. We put a dumpster pickup there, we thought that might be easier, because we didn't have five or six trash barrels up, or actually, you know, actually 12 because of the recycling. On Florence Ave or Wester Street, we thought a private pickup might be easier, so we put a spot there, so at the end of the day, we'll do whatever is the.
I mean, I personally not in favor of that, because it's noisy, you know, when they pick up the dumpster, it has all the feel of a commercial neighbor at that point. And then depending upon the company you hire, they may come earlier in the morning.
Yep.
And even if we put a condition, because I personally experienced, if they come too early in the morning, you can't get a hold of anybody at City Hall that's going to run down and catch them there on time, right? So.
So we don't have, we don't have a problem. We'll just do a city pickup and have some rules and regulations.
I'll see what my colleagues think, but that's, you know, that jumped out.
We just want to put the site, the dumpster pad, the site, should it be, should it be, if the board wanted that.
Understood. Yeah, no, all right, no, thank you. So we have the trash pickup for this house. This is, we come all the way down here. These people bring it all the way down. These can go out here. So, Mr. Daley, on a good point, on the two-family, okay.
So the question I brought up on that is, if it was city pickup, I could see where, you know, Lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 could put them right on Westford Street.
Yeah.
My question would be the two-family in the back, they have to come all the way down the driveway to Florence?
You're right, correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we, yeah, because the other ones could just go right to Westford Street, makes it easier.
Correct, yeah.
Right out front. Okay, all right.
I just, yeah, I personally have a problem with the dumpster, like I said. At that point, it's, it is like having your restaurant there.
You're right, it's, I can see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have anything further, Jerry, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, and then I appreciate the landscape plan, you know, would have liked that a little earlier, but that's part of the subdivision approval, and, but it gives specific sizes for the trees, and I know, are you eliminating some existing trees that are there right now, right? Was there?
Yeah, there's a couple trees that.
Large trees, right?
Yeah, some, yeah, some pretty significant. So we tried to add as many trees, as you can see, we have added a decent number of trees to the site.
So online, I was able to blow it up, and I'm looking at this here, so can you just tell us about the size of those street trees? It was got three-inch caliper or three-and-a-half inch caliper, whatever.
Those, obviously that's what will get planted, they will grow, especially the street trees over time, they will grow pretty substantially.
I mean, subdivision, it's very specific, page 22, section on the trees, it's actually supposed to be eight feet tall, but I, and I understand the likelihood of, you know, the smaller they are, the easier for them to survive.
Yeah.
But, you know, just trying to look at the impact on.
Jonathan is, Jonathan is our vice president, he, I think he's got a minor degree in landscape engineering and other, but he can speak to it more.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Jonathan Miller, 26th St., Newbury Port, grew up in Lowell on Inover Street, and visited the Legion a few times. With regard to a tree that's three-and-a-half inch caliper, that's probably a 12-foot tree at plant, right? So that three-inch, three-and-a-half inch caliper, measured, I believe it's four feet high off the ground, so that's the base, that's the thickness of the trunk at planting.
Okay, so I would put, I mean, based on our subdivision control approval, I would put that no less than eight feet tall, three-and-a-half, and that's fine. I just want to make sure, because again, it's, the idea is if you're taking out some street trees, we don't want it to take five years to at least, you know, so that's, that's fine, that's good.
Yeah, just as like an English oak that's two-and-a-half inch caliper, that's a 12-foot tree.
Sure, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Possibly, Mr. Fischett, we could put a condition in that whatever landscaping plan would have to be approved by DPD.
Yeah, that's the final, but at the end of the day, on the subdivision approval, that's why I, you know, I saw the comment from DPD, but that's not, it lies here on the subdivision control, and we want to, because it's a larger site, you know, it's not one, it's not a site plan, it's not one site, so how is this going to look on the street, you know, so, and it specifically lays out what we're looking for, so doing my job here on the planning board. Appreciate that. You know, the final, you know, we want to see it, and then we like to put final approval, because they know what our intent is, and if there's any changes or any problem along the way, then they can bring it back to us, but, absolutely, great, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Danny, any questions, comments? Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really like the proposal, I also like the landscaping plan, I think it provides a good blending for the Tyler Park area. I think it's helpful to have the amount of trees that it's there. I had also gone by the site this past week, and it looks like there was maybe 11 or so trees that were clear-cut, you know, over the last, how many years? I don't know how many years, but, so it is going to improve the property by this proposal. I thought the, I thought what the historic commission suggested as far as the wraparound porch, neat idea, wouldn't have thought of it, but that's why we have them, so I like that. Jerry, I, I'm at odds with you regarding, we need 12 garbage cans coming down a driveway, where do we put them? I like the.
I like the, I like the fact of, if we're having a homeowners' association, to put the garbage in a, you know, like, not like, what was that place?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other place, on Middlesex.
China Star.
Yeah, China Star. I mean, it's got to be, you know, with the fencing and whatnot, you know, but I like that idea, just because I think it's going to be difficult for people to get their trashcans, you know, what are they going to keep them, near their front door on Westford? So I look at that, and I just took the opposite view, and I'm not doing it just to be contrarian, although that would be fun, but I do think, I do think it might be necessary for the homeowners' association to deal with all of the garbage at one time. I certainly think we could put a condition, and I hear what you're saying, I have dumpster pick, pickup near my house, and, you know, sometimes it's 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, you know, you can put the condition in, but at a certain point, your remedy is, is to report it to the building department, and then hold the owner accountable.
I would just tell you, my neighborhood has lived with that dream, it doesn't work, so.
Can I, hi, is, am I allowed to?
Yeah, Miss, Miss, she might be hiding there, yeah, she knows.
So I have experience waking up at 5:00 in the morning to the, to the truck that picks up the dumpster that's currently there, and it only happens every so often now, because the building is empty, but it's, it's really not that bad. It's actually much less of an intrusive noise than the recycling truck that stops at every house, and they come very early also, and that's, it actually goes on and on and on.
Interesting.
And so I prefer being the neighbor, I prefer the dumpster, and also, I hope will help with critter control, hoping maybe we can get like a, you know, what they do up north with the little like bear locks and stuff, not that we have bears running around Lowell, but I find that the critters get into the trashcans much easier than they do the dumpsters, especially with a fenced-in area. So I'm in favor of a dumpster, but no strong personal preference either way.
No, appreciate the comment. If you lost, if you listened to the last planning board meeting, we had a big issue about rodents getting into that. No, go ahead, go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
The only other thing I could think of was, is potentially have some area where you could line up the 12 garbage cans, but it is interesting what Ms. Sherman had indicated that there is a lot of noise from those garbage trucks when they come by, and you don't realize it, you know, it's kind of like, you're just used to it, but that was my thought on that. It looks like, from a lot of the comments, there's a number of conditions we need to put on, on the proposal. I like the proposal, I think it's good. I was surprised by the fire department, didn't seem to have any problem with putting their large ladder truck up this driveway. I was surprised by that, just given the width. The width looks like it's, it's tiny on this, but it's only 16 feet, and I thought that was interesting, but the fire department signed off on it, and said they were good with it, as long as the plan doesn't change. And none of the changes are to any of the pavement or the buildings, other than the wraparound. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Yeah, the Cooplers, yes, the fake stuff, John. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go next. I think we, as Attorney Cox indicated, we got a good report from Planning and Development, and since the applicant is in agreement with all the recommendations and the proposed conditions, that basically satisfies my concerns. On the dumpster trash, I could go either way on it, to be honest with you. Like I said, the trucks are loud, you hear them coming up the street before you see them, the dumpster's going to be loud. So I'm still up in the air on which way I would go with it. I mean, I mean, like I say, I know Ms. Sherman is against it, and I'll try to do whatever works for the neighborhood. I'm glad to hear that the applicant's willing to work with the no parking on Westford Street. I know it was indicated, you could put that in the homeowners' association, but that would just be limited to the homes that are being built there, and wouldn't restrict anybody else in the neighborhood from parking there. So obviously, if, if the city council's going to take up no parking in that area, we could recommend, you know, at least encourage that the city council do it, but I wouldn't want to try to make it a condition of something that, and then if the city council didn't do it, then the whole project goes down, so I don't want to.
And we could, we would send a letter.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and that's why I'd say we could say that the planning board's in favor of it, you know, to the council, and that, whether those favorization makes a difference, but, but I, you know, as Mr. Hunt said, you know, on that Florence Ave there, how it's close to the corner, I could see where that could be a little bit of inconvenience there. I know the neighborhood very well, like I said, I grew up about four or five streets down on Robin Street, and I've hung around Tyler Park before, which is a beautiful park, and I condemn this to Hunt and the people up there for taking care of Tyler Park, it's one of the nicest parks in the city. They do an excellent job. Every time you drive by there, they have all sorts of activities going on in the summer, and I think that, that really helps make this project, because it's so close to the park. You know, we always look at, we're looking at a special permit, how close are we to a park, you know, open space area and all that, and, you know, as Ms. Sherman said, she walks her dog, she goes in the park, I'm sure these people in these houses will do the exact same, so I love the fact that it's right, right next to the park. Yeah, I'm in favor of the project. I think it'll be a nice improvement. I love the renderings that were submitted. The porch is there, I think are very nice. I mean, I, I think they came up very nice on the rendering, so, yeah, I'd be in favor of it. So I'm moving along. Other board members, Ms. Walker, any comments you have on that?
I agree with point number 19, that it's definitely an upgrade to the existing structure, and it's certainly in stride with Lowell Forward, our master plan. It's going to create more housing, and the historic board has signed off on it, so I would see no reason not to.
Thank you.
Be in favor.
So, we're not too well-versed over here, which one is going to be voting tonight? Jova, it's in, it's going to be yourself? Okay, so we'll hear from Tal first, and we'll hear from you, because you'll vote, until we let Tal get his two cents in first. Tal, any questions, comments?
I live around a corner.
Oh, just push that.
I live around a corner.
Turn around.
Excited.
I live around a corner. I, I drive by there all the time, I've, I've seen the site, and I'm excited to see that's being developed. But I guess, I have a question here. In terms of lighting, kind of dark that, during that, you know, that area, so is, you know?
Well, each house is going to have a front light, unfortunately, you know, over the last, you know, years, they've, they've, there's been pushback against any site lighting because of flooding into the neighborhood, into the neighbors, so there will be lighting, obviously, on the houses themselves, floodlights on the back of the, on the garages, and then on the duplex, so. No actual driveway lights, because we've, this, that's actually caused more problems. I think when you see the houses up, there'll be, there will be plenty of light. Right now, it's a vacant sea of asphalt with no lighting, so it's a kind of scary, dark site. We look to change that with the houses, and they'll, they'll provide plenty of light without, without having any adverse effects on the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all right, I have no question.
Jova, has any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Only one comment I also want to make was, I do, I do appreciate how you moved the memorial from the front to the back. I'm, I know Mr. Cox indicated last time that you were keeping that, and obviously.
We spoke.
That's a good neighbor by keeping the memorial.
Yeah, we spoke with the family, and they really much appreciated that, so.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm going up there looking after the zoning, and I mentioned that there, I'm like, you know, what exactly was it, now I see where you have it, I mean, it's nice to keep memorial there, I mean, you know, for anybody, you know, that you kept it on site, I mean.
Absolutely.
I mean, I appreciate that, it's, that's being neighbor, neighbor, but, I mean, so, does staff have any comments more towards the dumpster or the trash pickup, or it's kind of up to us, or, I mean, or do a combination there?
I don't think we have an opinion.
Yeah.
One idea we've done in the past is, again, on paper, it sounds better, but I think we can enforce it through an HOA, that whoever we, whoever we hire for the trash pickup, that it limited to an 8:00 AM or later pickup, to have a less impact, negative impact on the neighborhood. So we would put that in HOA docs. Whoever we pick up, whoever we hire, say, you can't pick it up before 8:00 AM. That's, we've done that in the past with some success.
Yeah. So would there be any way that, these neighbors would be able to contact somebody if, you know, they're coming early in the morning, any way, I mean, they'll reach out to someone, Mr. Daly?
We're a 24-hour, 24-hour, seven-day-a-week business, they can call us anytime. We have managers on, on staff, and emergency managers on staff, 24 hours, seven days a week, so. Once it's all sold, that's actually, might be different, but there would be an HOA, and there'd be someone to contact, there'd be a contact through the HOA.
I just will comment on the comment of the two family. Where the dumpster is, you're still taking it all the way down the street. To put it into the dumpster, so.
Still a hall.
I just wanted to clear that.
Yeah, but, you're still going to have to pull, you're still going to have to pull the two barrels down the street too, right?
Yeah, exactly. No, I'm just, like I said, it comes from the best part of what I'm thinking, and I'm thinking more like the neighbor, and I see where Ms. Sherman is, but there's, there are houses that are closer, there's one like right feet away from where this dumpster is, so I, you know, it's just.
Yeah, at least you'd be set back.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a concern, but I certainly, you know, we can get a consensus, I just have a concern, there's no question about it, but, you know, certainly, we can put time restrictions, it does become, I think probably what will police it the best is the people that'll be affected as well are the people that are paying into the HOA, so I suspect they won't want to see it, them too early in the morning, but. So that, I mean, that would, that may, you know, help police it.
Impacts them the most.
Yeah, exactly, so, but it did surprise me to see it in there like that, I mean, you know, it resembles more of a detached condominium project than it does a single-family.
Right.
Development with that on there, but.
Again, we're more than happy to put that in the HOA docs, so they follow that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you, you've made it very clear, you're flexible on whatever we want to do, we're just trying to figure out what works, what works best. What, Mr. Daly, in the past, what have you found from a time, like, you know, no earlier than 8:00 AM and no later than, what have you?
Usually past, they don't usually do it past 5:00 o'clock, so it's usually nine, eight to five.
Eight to five.
And it's worked perfectly well in the past. The first couple times potentially, but then once they get yelled at by the first HOA member, they stop doing it and follow the rules.
People comfortable with that? Comfortable with that? Makes sense? Comfortable with that? So see, you're comfortable with that?
I mean, I don't have a problem, but that makes sense. I mean, yeah, okay. I mean, surprised that's our only sticky point, which is a good thing for you folks. And it's not a sticky thing, it's just a preference thing.
Right.
Right, I mean, you know, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't think there's a perfect solution, I think there's going to.
No, it's not.
Each one's going to have some.
Right. I mean, obviously, it has to be screened and everything else, like, you know, because that's in the zoning code anyways. So basically, we need three votes, one for the site plan, one for the special permit, and one for the definitive subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions. Well, yeah, special permit with the following conditions. The applicant will work in cooperation with the city administration and the city council to restrict parking on Westford Street as determined in the vicinity of the development, and the applicant will include in the homeowners' association documents that residents of the development will not be allowed to park on Westford Street. The applicant will include in the homeowners' association that dumpster pickup will be restricted between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM on weekdays. And the dumpster will be adequately enclosed as required. The proposed street trees will be of a height of no less than eight feet tall, three-and-a-half inch caliper trees, and any revisions are subject to final approval by DPD of the landscape plan. The applicant agreed to the conditions that were incorporated in the, the comment letter from DPD. First condition is the applicant shall provide an access easement for each property granting access to the driveway. In the agreement shall detail maintenance, snow removal, and use of proposed parking spaces on the driveway. The applicant shall obtain approval from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. The applicant shall provide utility agreement for each of the properties, subject to wastewater approval. The applicant shall obtain fire department approval if any changes to the site plan impacting fire access are made. And the applicant has agreed to all of the conditions set forth by the Engineers Department on their memo dated January 15th, so I would incorporate those conditions into the conditions of the approval of the site plan.
So we have a motion on the floor, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Special permit, Mr. Chairman.
A motion on the floor for the special permit, I'll second the motion. So all in favor on this special premise, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the special permit carries, five in favor and none against. So the next matter will be the vote on the site plan. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the same conditions that were just cited on this special permit.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved, five in favor, none against. And the last vote will be the definitive subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision incorporating the conditions that were set forth in the special permit in the site plan.
So we have a motion in favor for the definitive subdivision. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the definitive subdivision is approved as well, all for five in favor and none against, so. Wish you well, good luck, everybody.
Thank you so much, we appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, and as always, want to thank Francesca and Dylan for all their help at DPD, they're very, very helpful. Thank you.
Good luck with it. Moving along on the agenda, does any of the board members have any follow-ups from any other committees that they're on? I know Dan is missing one meeting down the hall, because he's here with us tonight.
I'm going to have to go to that next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for the update on the NEMCOG, I serve on the, as the treasurer of Northern Millices Council of Governments and representative of the planning board. It should be uploaded on their website, but we've just approved, and it's been a process over a couple-year period of a five-year strategic, the five-year strategic plan for the Northern Millices Council of Governments. Lot of work went into the document, we had, we had envisioning sessions, we had a committee that was in place, and we met for well over a year, and it was part of the goals of the new executive director, Jenny Ray, when she came in, was to actually put together a plan that describes NEMCOG, and also outlines really a roadmap for the future of the agency as it really starts to become a more of a regional planning agency, and not necessarily transportation-centric, because that was really what NEMCOG was really concentrating on, on transportation. So really, it's, I would encourage people to look at it, it's a, it's a well-thought-out document, and I think you'll. document, and I think you'll find it, it'll clarify a lot of, I think, of a lot of the mystique behind what it is that NEMCOG does, so I would encourage people, it should be out on the website at this point, I'll, I'll actually email the board members if, if in fact it isn't, but I would encourage you to go to the NEMCOG website, look for the strategic plan. So, thank you.
Danny, any comments, updates, no? Okay.
Is NEMCOG in charge of the Rock Bridge development?
It is out of our hands, no.
Okay, just, just wondering.
It's in the full hand of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And you're assuring the public that that's going to begin this year?
It had the, if you saw the article in the newspaper, they put out the RFP, and in March, they should have a contractor, and there should be a groundbreaking before the end of the year.
Okay, all right, I'm looking forward to being there with you.
Jerry, go to side hat, all ready, ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. So in the next meeting, I did speak with Fran, and we will be appointing a representative to the historic board, now that we have more board members on board, so that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting, and that meets on just one Monday a month. Like I said, one planning board member sits on that board, so that'll be on the agenda if any of the new board members are interested in that, we'll be voting on that as the next meeting, which I believe we meet next time on February 3rd. Yeah. Yeah, and we have that, what, the one other project that we continued to February 3rd, Fran, and you said that's the only other matter we have on, on the Gorm Street, that one there, the old Heinzes, right, okay. So I think that completes our agenda, we can entertain a motion to adjourn by one of our new members. Lucy, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Yeah, you got to get your name in a minute. Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, all right.
All right. Any opposition? I have none, the motion carries.
Look at Dan, I expect you to.
Good night, everybody.